It's good to see everyone out this afternoon. It's hard to say tonight, but it's not hard to night yet, but it's good to see everybody out. And so we'll get started and the first thing is Mr. Kevin Bernard is gonna come up and talk about the comprehensive plan for City of Rainsville. And we'll let, we'll turn it over to him, let him speak on that for a little bit.
Well, evening, everyone. Good evening.
Evening.
Um, this is gonna be a very informal address, stood before you at several occasions, but first of all, let me just wish you a happy new year, everyone here, happy new year. This is a culmination of like eighteen months of work. And so we, at Tarkog and the planning department, we partnered with Rainsville to produce its first ever comprehensive plan. And again, just to restate, a comprehensive plan is pretty much a guide, it's a bunch of suggestions that we have gathered from ideas from the community, we've gathered ideas from each department within Rainsville, or the city council members, and from the public at large through different means, so that we can come up with an idea of what our consensus, what everyone would like Rainsville to, to be like probably in the next ten to fifteen years. So this comprehensive plan, it's very flexible, and when I say that, I mean that it would require on a yearly basis evaluation and assessment to see where we have gone or where we have, what we've achieved, or what City of Rainsville have achieved or accomplished in this plan. So it's not gonna be necessarily valid for the next five, ten years or fifteen years unless we have put into place some of the things that are in this plan. So there's gonna be a concept revision, things that we've accomplished and we've put in place are going to be eliminated and new bold initiatives will need to be realized and added to this, so it will continue to evolve. There are several elements to the comprehensive plan, which includes transportation and the streets and what we do in parks, the economy in downtown, and again, these are basically suggestions, consensus of what, of residents and administration think would be the best fit for Rainsville moving forward. We're really, really happy that we, that you chose us to be a part of this, to work on this project, and going forward, we would be happy to work on any other projects that you see, see fit to improve Rainsville going forward. With that said, if there are any questions, today is the formal presentation of this document, we will not go through it, but we extensively reviewed it as we went along. So today would be when we adopt it formally, and let me just extend to you, the committee, and also the members of Rainsville, citizens of Rainsville, this is not the end. We will be available, at Tarkog, if not myself, the planning department and anyone else who works at Tarkog would be available to help implement these options. Of course, that's only charged to you. If there's anything that's in here that needs to be questioned, evaluated, or needs to be revised, we'd be happy to work with you in terms of.
Is that something that we need to probably contact you maybe yearly or every two years and have, you know, just go over a few things in it, just to kinda keep us up to date?
Yes, you can certainly do so, but even going forward, this year 2017, as you look at the plans and try to implement them, if there's anything that we can do, if you're able to contact us, we'd be happy to help you along implementing these plans and showing you, evaluating some of the techniques that we can use to implement some of these plans. So if there are any questions available to answer?
I would just like to say that I really appreciate the, the work that you've put into this and, and Tarkog, you know, our witness has been over here and worked on this some too, and so I, I really appreciate it. And I, I'd like to say that, you know, there was a lot of hard work when, from the previous mayor and council, they, they had a lot of meetings, a lot of citizens came to those meetings, done a great job of putting these campaigns together, and I'd just like to commend them for all their, all their work and their effort that they've done and put into it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And don't forget our map.
Yes, I am currently working on those maps, there's a larger maps, but in the interim, we have electronic copies and PDFs, so you can distribute it as you see fit, and these are some maps that you need to use in the interim until we get to a lot of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to go over, and then we'll start with council. The first thing is it's time for us to sign the contract with Power-Teco for the Freedom Fest. We do this every year about this time, they, they usually give us a little bit of discount if we go ahead and do it ahead of time, and it's time for that, so I'll be bringing that up. Of course, the resolution for the, for the Tarkog comprehensive plan, we'll be bringing that up. And then, this is something that I have been talking to Sam Phillips about the last, I don't know, few weeks. We paid Carlisle, and with that, they, there was some shelter material, and we didn't know if we was gonna need it or not, but after everything's got paid, we're, we're gonna go back and put that shelter material along the edge of Carlisle, not everywhere, but in certain places. And, and this money is already, is part of that grant that we got from the, from the state, so it, it'll pay off for half of it anyway, so I'll be bringing that up to get that, get that done too, and wire grass is gonna go back, they've got the equipment, they got the shelter material, we're gonna do it all, wire grass is gonna do it all.
They raised about a ton of things.
Yes, and, and the estimated cost is around twenty thousand. Now, that could be twenty thousand total, and it'd be ten thousand us, or, you know, something like that, so that would be, that would be what, how much it would be. So from there, we'll, we'll start with Mark.
No, I'm having fun.
Okay, alright, Bijon.
Mayor, I've got a couple of things to go over. For some reason, on the old administration, they cut the budget of the Chamber of Commerce, nine thousand dollars, I don't know what the reason was, that they cut that money, and I looked at the budgets and how the upgrades and the budget was down to ten thousand dollars, and it's cut back to forty seven. So I'm gonna bring that up to give them back that nine thousand dollars that they cut back.
Now, you and Ricky made for them and went over.
They gave us the dead budget, daily budget with the, how much the telephone area is, lab day, employees and all that, and everything was sufficient, because I'm, I don't know, we're gonna give them that nine thousand dollars.
Okay, alright.
And other things I want to talk about is, I don't know if some of you may already know, but about the kind of bad news about our chief. He decided he wants to pay, which I don't blame him, he found another job, that is gonna pay him a lot more than what we can afford to pay. So he's gonna be in San Antonio, and we wish him good luck to go to his new job. I wish he wouldn't, but we understand that there's no way we can afford to pay it, but they don't pay it. And so I'm gonna bring that up for Johnny, I think he's got a statement he can read to us, and we appreciate why he got twenty-one years, Johnny, twenty-seven years here with the city, and I hate for him to go, you know, but there's nothing we can do to pay that kind of money to him, and I don't blame him for him to go. I would go with the same thing. Especially him getting lost with his retirement, and he is, he got his, based on the state retirement, there's three of your nine service, and that means a lot for him, and it's bad for him, so that's, I'm grateful I didn't believe, but although that's certainly his personal issue tonight.
We need to go ahead and put in some power.
Yeah, if you want to come. I'll try to get through this without leaving too much, you know, apologize, I'm leaving sick. So, a combination of all eight, right there. Mayor and council, after four years of service, it's seven, twenty-two months, my resignation, that as chief of police, as president, it's been honored and privileged to protect and serve by the citizens of this city. It's cool to like to meet the current council, and the, and the previous council members, but there's four of me as the chief. I do feel that this, this guy opened the door for me. I feel like that every possibility for me to stay here has been closed, and this door has been opened to benefit me and my family. So I'd like to extend an appreciation to you guys, thank you very much for the opportunity. And to the citizens, I greatly do appreciate your support of me, I've screwed some stuff up, and, you know, y'all been there, so I greatly do appreciate, this is what I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss serving you guys, I'm gonna miss the opportunity to see you out on the streets and stuff like that, so, you know, it's sad to me today to, to say that, but I do resign as a chief.
I'd like to say, chief, we, we, first, I appreciate everything you've done for the city here, you know, your twenty years, I know we got some council, mayor does as well, but we appreciate you and your family for everything that y'all did for the city, so I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate it, thanks for what you've done.
Chief, I appreciate what you've done. I know, I sort of like being in your position, because, when he talks.
He does.
And, you know, I, I know what, basically what you told me, you know, while I'm here, that you start out out, what it goes to next year, through your mark.
Yes.
And what that will do to your retirement will be even better than that, so it'll actually better you as your fam, highlights with our game.
It's a hard decision, trust me.
I appreciate your job you've done.
I'm speaking for all of us, yeah. Johnny, I wanna say, you know, I think you've done an excellent job, I wish we'd done more, really, try to keep, and I just wanna say that from a personal standpoint, I'll mention, but I mean, used to be here, but I think we're like, a good man, I appreciate it.
Me and Johnny had a long talk Friday, and it, it was a good talk, we both, you know, got a little motion, so, but, but I, I've worked with Johnny for about thirteen years now, or so, I always enjoyed working with Johnny, Johnny's a good chief, done a great job, have no, no complaints at any time. One of the things that me and him talked about was his badge and his service revolver, and we worked it out to where this right here will take care of that, and it transfers from the City of Rainsville to you. It's had to be paid, and it's done paid, so there it is, and it's, it swaps over to you, and it's, and it's your service revolver and badge for the rest of your life and your family, and, and I want you to know that, and, and, and that's the way we had to do it to make it work right, so, but it's yours, and I, I wanna, I wanna commend you for your work and everything that you've ever done for the city, and I really, going forward, have a, have a great career, you know, you've, you've had this police career, and you got the military to follow behind, you know, follow back on and go with it and keep going into the future, and I want you to have a really good life, and this is a great step for you and your family. So, but anyway, the thing that we talked about, we'll, yeah. Good.
I appreciate it. Before we go, we're gonna take picture with you, before you go. Mayor, the other thing I got to bring up is since Johnny's leaving, what is your last thing, you know?
My actual class organ day is Friday.
Friday, okay. Until we get the new chief, we do not have assistant chief either at this time, so what I'm gonna do now is first of all, we're gonna open up a job application for a police chief and assistant police chief. We're gonna start tomorrow, we're gonna be in the paper, and we're gonna go through the interview process with the mayor, and with the chief and assistant chief. But meantime, I'm gonna form Josh Wiggly tonight to be an acting assistant chief, and I think that's a good move on our part, because Josh grew up in this town, he's got a fantastic relationship with people and people skill, and we're glad to have him to be assistant chief active right now, and he's gonna put application in for assistant chief, and I'm gonna bring that up tonight. I guess that's all of that, but I know, I know Johnny needed some stuff, did you bring me down these, this stuff?
Yes, yes, I emailed it to you, it was computer for Nancy Asen, that was my shot.
I didn't go home to get my email, I'm sorry, I can't put it out in my computer, but on the, what's it, I'm in the regular council, there's a few things that he needs, one day he got to, it'll be, it'll work, then we'll take mine. That's all of that.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, I noticed over here that you got down to, about the prep markets, but you're gonna do that in house?
Yeah, we're gonna do that in house, but that's what made it, I got about five or six people in the short, I'll trim it on.
I suggest, I think, I think we should get together.
In this room?
Yeah, we're gonna do that in house, just get started on that, just soon we get done with Christianize, but we also started the civilian confrontation, that's been sort of hectic because of the riots and everything, and we got that started yesterday, that's coming along pretty well, but once they get recruited, it's lights up, we have a plan to work on it.
Brandon.
I'm just, we have our contract in from Burris and Poole, and I guess we'll need the empower to be the same.
Okay, and I talked to Jimmy Traider today, and he's gonna give us a contract for the revolver in the building too. We're done doing all that, but we need a contract, so we feel empowered to sign up on what we can do, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
Can I wait and empower you to sign that one, and just when it comes in?
We'll probably get it tomorrow, okay. Ross.
Mayor, I've got a couple of things that, the fire department, that we're gonna be kinda moving around, we'll kinda explain to everything, and kinda go back when, when they're calling Chief Ridgeway, and kind of say, and talk. Me and Chief Ridgeway's been talking for several weeks now, since, basically, we've got sworn in, and since I've got sworn in, we all, we all got sworn in, and I kinda told him kind of a plan, what, you know, I'd like to sit fire department, get assistant chief, and possibly fire chief going Monday through Friday, and we've had some conversations, several weeks of conversations, and unfortunately, Chief, he was not able to do the movement through Friday, and he requested to step down as assistant chief due to personal reasons, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to call on Chief Ridgeway and let him go ahead and tell him, and then we'll go to.
We'll go to the next.
Oh, Councilor Rossman approached me shortly after his appointment, is our department head on, and we had a lengthy discussion about fire chief moving Monday through Friday, and he expressed we had desired for that to happen, and he also explained to me that they were opening up an assistant fire chief position, and due to personal reasons, I asked him if I could move to that assistant fire chief position, and he agreed to that, and I'm, I'm totally fine with it, have no problem whatsoever, I think it'd be a, a good move, we'll continue to go forward, and everything will be great. That's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, like I said, this wasn't something to set in overnight, Mayor and council, and this has been lengthy conversation, so I just, we just wanna clear that up, and I'll be making a motion to, after that, turn around to hire him as the assistant chief tonight. Next thing that I have, are we, let's see. Captain Jason Brandon, he's having some, he's our captain right now, he's having some issues, personal issues, and he, him and Derek Husky came to me and talking about maybe positive switching, him going back to the recruiting retention coordinator, my understanding that you was the recruiting retention coordinator when it first started, and then they swapped. I think, I, I sat down with both of them, and talked with Chief Ridgeway, and we kinda had a lot of conversations, and we decided first of all, we're gonna make all this happen. By doing this, that'll give him time to spend with his family that's needed, and if you wanna say anything, go more than love him, if it's okay with the mayor and council, but I'd like to go ahead and swap Jason Brandon and Derek Husky, just go ahead and make that swap tonight as well, and so we can move forward, and if you, you want to say anything, Derek, you, y'all guys are more than lucky.
I just appreciate this opportunity for this to come about, working, working twenty-four hour shifts can be difficult whenever you're in a difficult situation, being several miles from home and having a sick family, and it doesn't seem like it's for me, and it's one after another, it's not just one person, I got two that are very, very sick, and this allowed me to be off at night, be available for them, and I appreciate this opportunity to, to move back into this position, and I think it'd be better for the fire department as well, and so for the citizens to be in the cause, so that I had to call out, and it's not like there's a detriment, the, the station being down there trying to get somebody to come in and to cover that shift, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to explain, for, for those of y'all that don't know what this is, it's recruit retention program, it's basically, it's a grant that, that pays him to go out and recruit and other things, so, and it's a Monday through Friday, eight to five, so this will help him with his family, especially at night, so take care of that. Next thing I'll be doing, Mayor, is going ahead and appoint Willie Wright as the acting fire chief, I might go ahead and do that, and also gonna open it up for a seven day in-house, you imagine, seven days internally, I'd like to go ahead and do that, and go ahead and have it here starting tomorrow, Monday through Friday, so if that's okay with all you guys. That's really all I have, and I know it's a lot, but just go ahead and make this move, and we can move forward, so that's all I have, Mayor. Thank, thank y'all for coming out and talking.
Go back to my department, the department heads, Tim.
I don't know, is that?
About, Sarah, yeah, she was behind the, game, buddy? About Tim, about her at the chamber? The chamber bank could come down.
That's true, only sixteen days, never an annual, fiftieth annual, may as well chamber commerce annual meeting.
Mr. Miss Ayers?
Yeah, we're, 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 we're long gone, you know?
So is I have a home ground.
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, I don't have anything else, and so we'll have a, we'll adjourn it for a few minutes, if I can get up top here. Start with the meeting, and we'll have Rob, Carl, Marshall. Bijon.
Here.
Ricky.
Here.
Brandon.
Here.
Derek.
Here.
Everybody's here? We'll get started off, and I'll just start off with, we'll start on the far end today with Derek.
You want to approve the minutes first, yeah?
Oh, you can.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes, if you're ready.
We got a motion to second to approve the minutes? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, go ahead.
First thing I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion to accept Chief Ridgeway as a gradination, if chief?
Okay, we have a motion in a second for, to accept Chief Ridgeway's decision, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, stand by.
I'd also like to make a motion to hire Mr. Ridgeway as the assistant chief at the top-up play, second to me.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to hire Chief, not Chief Ridgeway, Mr. Ridgeway. I slipped on that, alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, stand by.
Next thing I wanna bring up, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Willie Wright as the acting chief at the starter grade, as chief, as a rattler, and also, I would, I just posted internally for seven days, can I make that all a motion?
Well.
We're done in minutes, I'm gonna make a second.
At least we said.
Let's go that first. I'll save it.
We have a motion to appoint Willie Wright as the acting chief until you go through the, the end of the question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna make a motion to do, post, post that job seven days internally as the chief, for the chief position, so I need to make that into a motion. Second on that.
We have a motion to post the chief's job, for, for the internal posting of seven days, that's second to Bijon, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The reason we're just doing seven days on that is there's not a really a, a, an outside job to leave, you know, anybody to be brought in on that for right now, so right now it's just an internal, everything's the internal move on this.
Next thing, I'll make a motion to swap Derek Husky into the position of what Jason Brandon got with the safer brand, so do I, I, I guess I'm gonna make that separate, just like that. I wanna make, make a motion to make Jason Brandon the new retention coordinator, recruit retention coordinator, and then it's on the third period, which has the grant, which they paid for, that's seventeen twenty-six, so I'd like to make that a motion.
Second. We have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
The rest is all a word. I also like to make a motion to put Derek Husky as the new captain at top-up play at thirteen thirty-seven, I think it's amazing.
Second. We have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And I believe that's it, that's all we got.
Good job.
Sorry. We'll make sure I get it all straightened out. Thank you.
I'm gonna make the motion that we empower the mayor to sign the slip-up contract with Burris and Poole, and also the contract with Jimmy Traider on the Poole House.
Well, I think it'd be a two-step motion, Mayor.
Yes.
On the first one, I'm making a motion to empower the.
Exactly, here's the motion, Mayor.
I have a motion in a second to empower me to sign a contract with Burris and Poole. This we went over a few weeks ago and accepted the contract. Uh, this we went over a few weeks ago and accepted the contract, but this is just gonna be the contract for it, so. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Outset him?
I'll make a motion, we empower the mayor to sign the contract with Jimmy Traider construction on the pool house, it's like that.
We have a motion and a second, the contract with Jimmy Traider on the pool house, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright. Just viral, nothing?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, good job. Not spending any money like that. Bijan?
Mayor, I'm gonna make the motion tonight to give nine thousand dollars back to Chamber of Commerce, uh, budget, but instead of last, uh, restoration, I'm gonna put that in motion to make that.
Second. We have a motion and a second to add nine thousand dollars back to the Chamber budget.
Can I ask a question before we vote on that?
Yeah.
Alright, by that being stated, if we look at our budget, can we afford to put nine thousand back in there with that change in the budget?
Yes. I, I, I talked to Betty about that and we, we went over the budget and that, I had her to work on that along with that three percent raise that we gave the employees. And, uh, both of those, that money was in that for us, so, but that happened to change it. Now, if we do anything else later, we're gonna have to, I mean, with, with those two lines, we're okay. Alright.
Four second on that, to give that a second.
I, I, did you get a motion and a second? Yes, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
The other thing that that mayor is, uh, in regard to our police chief, that he can't do your, his regulations, I'm making a motion to accept his resignation.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and a second to accept Johnny Stewart's resignation from the police. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
And, uh, I'm also making a motion tonight to put Josh Wiggly as a acting police chief right now, assistant chief. Acting assistant police chief, temporary, he gonna be applying for the job, it is open. I'm gonna make another motion, then we're gonna post the job, but right now I'm making a motion for Josh being, uh, acting assistant chief.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, the other motion I'm gonna make, that, that chief of police and assistant chief of police is open, uh, for fourteen days in-house and outside. Anybody interested can apply for it and we'll go through the end of the process. I'm gonna put that in motion.
Seven, seven, seven on the inside, seven on outside?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, we have a motion to post the, the two jobs, the chief and the assistant chief, uh, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Alright, you got a second? Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Outset him?
Alright, for the police department, there's a couple of things they need right now desperately, one of them is their computer. It tracks the, uh, driver's license and things like that, it's kind of the one that's, that is old, it's shutting down and slowing down and they have to have a new one. It's called, uh, N C I C computer and it costs us six hundred and forty-five dollars roughly. I'm gonna make that motion to purchase that for the police department.
Second, here's a motion, Mayor. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second to buy a computer for, for the police department, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Outset him?
And also they need, uh, a couple of handheld radio, what they have is not working anymore, it's old and, uh, the cost on this one is four hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece, so I make the motion to purchase two handheld radios.
Outset him?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to order or purchase two new radio, handheld radios for the police department. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I have.
Uh, I have, uh, have a contract for the fireworks, uh, to be signed, it's already in the budget, the fireworks is. Uh, the city of Orangeville pays for half the fireworks and Farmers Telecommunications pays for the other half. So, I just would like for somebody to make a motion to empower me to sign that contract with Pyro Tech Co. to put it back.
I'll make a motion without the mayor signing.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, the, the next thing I have is, uh, the resolution for the comprehensive development plan, uh, from Tarkov. It's a resolution that we have and it's resolution number, uh, zero one dash zero three dash two zero one six. And, uh, might for somebody to put that in for a motion for me to sign that.
I'll make that a motion, allow the mayor to sign resolution zero one zero three twenty-sixteen for Tarkov. Outset him?
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, the next thing I have is, like I explained, uh, about the, uh, shelter material for Carlisle Road and, uh, I'm gonna make, uh, put this out there for somebody to make a motion on it, uh, to go ahead and do this and, uh, the maximum of this would be about twenty thousand dollars, I think it'll be a good bit less than that, but, uh, this will be wiredized and it'll be paid for, uh, through part of that grant that we got from the state and, uh, so, somebody make a motion for that.
I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion, to empower the mayor to get it and put the shelter material on Carlisle Road and the cost estimate is twenty thousand, which is high for the loss of the city, half loss of the cap. And I'm gonna put that in motion.
We have a motion and a second for shelter material for Carlisle Road, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll make a motion to pay the monthly bills.
Oh, and second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second to pay monthly bills, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mayor, do you have anything?
I don't, as far as I'm aware. Alright.
Make a monthly bill, okay.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?